All right, Lee, let me know when you're ready. Yes.
Recording in progress.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for June 3. Whoever has, could you please, man, could you mute yourself, please? Who else is talking?
Mr. Hank.
I'm going to start again. If you're not participating in the meeting, we'd appreciate it if you could mute yourself. Thank you. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:09 PM on Tuesday, June 8th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shang present.
Chad Sexton Duranian present.
Veronica Kell present. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the cup which it stands, one day under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and it is also available on Channel 9. All right, 1.4 Chairman's additions and deletions. I would like to add 2.1, under appointments and hearings, a discussion with the Conservation Commission Chair, should she be available. That is the only addition that I have as such. There are a few things that will be covered under Town Administration Updates and Reports that are not listed, but they're part of the updates and reports. One is the opening of bids for the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. And I, a few announcements under Communications, but those don't need to be added, so. Anything, Joe or Chaz, to add?
I'm good.
All right. Public comment period. I know there was one public comment that was sent to me. So, Joan, if you would like to make your comment?
Yes, thank you, and I want to begin by thanking the Board for everything you're doing. I know it's more than you signed up for, but bless your hearts. We appreciate it. We really do. This is my comment. Most people in town probably aren't aware that there are folks who are in arrears on their property taxes, who are serving on town boards and committees. And it certainly doesn't seem appropriate, given that those boards and committees are enforcing and/or developing town policy in some instances. I know your plate is full, but I do hope it's something the BOS will address down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a comment? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to 1.6, review and approve the meeting minutes. That is TBD. So, right now, none. However, in tomorrow's noon meeting, one of the agenda items is to review the minutes for, we're starting with 2021, and going back to 2020 to see what the status is of all the Board of Selectmen minutes. So far, we have done an inventory back to 2020, which we will be discussing. A lot of these minutes are from prior to our time on the board. So, it has come to our attention that many sets of minutes have not been published. So, we are going to start addressing that. And so tomorrow's our analysis of that. So if you're interested in minutes, noon tomorrow is the time to tune in. All right, 2.1. Is Karen Hill present?
I am.
All right. I just wanted to discuss with you the fact that the Board of Selectmen have been receiving numerous emails stating that, let me get to that, that the Conservation Commission has decided that they are no longer doing business, including one from you, where it says, until there is staff in the Conservation Office, no one will be performing any conservation work for the town. And I wanted to ask you directly if this is actually the case. Is conservation meeting? And why do you think the Selectmen will do your appointed, the job that you are appointed to do?
First of all, why don't you read the letter that you got today?
I've read the letter. I am, I am asking the question, is the concert, until there is staff in the Conservation Office, no one will be performing any conservation work?
That was not my letter, and I would appreciate if you would read that letter that I sent to the Selectmen today, to the public.
All right, I will preface that with, there was approximately a year and a half time period where there was no staff in the Conservation Office. That time was from about January of 2016 to sometime in the spring of 2017. That said, I will read this. The Conservation Commission has been without staff for four months. The hours of the staff have been reduced to the point that, in my opinion, the positions are unattractive. Since the posting of the agent's position, there has been zero interest. I would beg to differ on that because I believe there were a few resumes that were discussed in Conservation Meetings that I was in attendance at. It is the responsibility of the Selectmen to provide us with the staff to operate. I will continue to say that it is the responsibility of the Office of the Board of Selectmen to post the positions, which has occurred. We are all volunteers and do not receive compensation, and to that I will say amen. Expecting volunteers to perform the workload of two paid positions for four months is unreasonable. The Selectmen themselves are hiring an interim Town Administrator to assist them in the operation of the town, and that is correct. I expect you to do the same for the Conservation Commission. I had, I believe that we did hire in March, a Conservation Administrator, who did come on board at some point in April and did resign in May. I had sent an email to all three Selectmen on May 29th, asking about staffing, and I was told by Selectman Shank to be patient. For four months, I have gone above and beyond my duties as a Commissioner and as Chair. It is not my duty as Chair to perform these tasks. Until there is staff in the Conservation Office, no one will be performing any conservation work. That said, I refer to MACC materials. There are about 100 Conservation Commissions in the state of Massachusetts that have a conservation agent. There are about half the Conservation Commissions, and how many towns are there in Massachusetts? 313, 320. About half of them do have paid staff. All the rest of them operate without paid staff, as this Board did during the time period when there was no staff in the Conservation Office. So what I will say is that not having staff does not absolve the Conservation Commission from the completing the duties for which they have been appointed. So, Madam Chair, what I would like to know from you is, as you state in your last sentence, until there is staff in the Conservation Office, no one will be performing any conservation work. Is that the case?
I would like to clarify some of your statements. You said that previously, when we didn't have any staff for over a year and a half, we actually did have staff. Karen Chapman was performing the work.
That's not exactly right.
Yes, it is.
Excuse me?
Or is if we're going to go over this, we should have a hearing. I don't believe we need to do this in an open meeting. So I suggest that we, as far as the letter, the letter was read, there was comments made, but I think we should have a public hearing or a hearing on this as opposed to going through this in open session. I'd really like to, to not have negative in this, in the administration that I'm serving, because I think we can deal with this in a much more professional way.
But, Madam Chair.
Point of order taken, Chaz. Joe, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Chaz, thank you. I, I appreciate that, okay, but I, I have an issue with me receiving a letter that nothing is going to be done. I, I have reached out to a, one of the agents, and we cannot put the town on hold because the entire country, the entire world is struggling to get employees. So, I guess my question would be, Karen, is why do you feel that you can just threaten us and say, nothing's going to be done in the town, and feel we're going to accept that?
I'm not threatening. Statement that we are overworked and clearly.
You did.
Right, I think at this point, we're going to.
Say, no work will be performed. This is a community. We have to have conservation work done. That is a very important part of the, the town and the operation. If you don't want to do it, then resign, but don't threaten us. I don't like to be threatened.
I, I guess also, given that we are in a situation with water in the town, that we'll be discussing it next week, conservation work becomes even more important. And so I, I believe that we will be scheduling a hearing about this, so Ms. Hill, you should expect to get a letter from us in the near future. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, one second, point of order. There's, there are two other conservation agents that are on this call. Can we at least, are they going to do any kind of work, or are we just going to be held hostage that nothing gets done? Can they, either one of you two sitting here want to speak into that, Mr. Hussy or Mr.?
I will allow it for a brief comment to answer Mr. Shank's question.
Either one of you want to answer?
If you don't choose to answer, that's fine. I believe we have a quorum. Do we have a quorum? Of the Board on this call? I believe we do. So there can be no deliberation, as this was not posted as a meeting. The only person that was present, requested to be present, was the Chair. So, there can be no deliberation with the Board, with the Conservation Commission.
You're not taking any comments at this point in time, Veronica?
No, we're not. Thanks, Jim.
Well, I don't find that to be as useful as it should be. You should be able to reach out to us as Commissioners to find out where we stand and how we feel about this whole situation.
And we will, and we will.
Well, I think it's a matter that you, you should on a very immediate basis. I, we've got to get some of these situations addressed as soon as possible. Absolutely. Situations in the building Inspector's office, I reviewed them quickly, and I find it important for us to get them addressed as soon as possible. So if we're going to have a meeting between the Conservation Commission and my, my select people of Townsend, I think we should get at that as soon as possible.
We will have a meeting with each of you. Thank you very much, and it will be as soon as possible.
Will that be individually on Veronica Kell's?
It will be individually. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to section 3.1. We have. Excuse me?
You're rude. Who's speaking? Jim, look where.
All right, we are moving on to 3.1.
Thank you, really nice. You're doing a great job, aren't you?
We are moving on to 3.1, the joint meeting with the Recreation Department. So if, do you have a quorum present?
No, I don't, in actuality. So, I believe I had sent in that we weren't going to make it a joint. Unfortunately, we only have two currently, and one's in school and the other one's in business. So, it's just me and my upcoming staff.
All right, so, let's go ahead and move into that.
So, do you guys want me to start with the cohort coordinator position and the COVID funds, or do you guys want to do the appointments to, I guess that probably that should go first?
The Recreation Commission are not on this agenda.
No, not the Commission, the staff.
Oh, the staff appointments, yes, those are on this agenda. I thought you meant the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, I think those are.
Those are the 29th, I believe.
Yep. So do you guys want me to speak into the COVID, the COVID funds for the cohort coordinator position and what that entails and what we're looking for?
That would be great, if you could, we would appreciate it.
So, as some of you may know, we've stayed open through this entire pandemic. We actually opened for summer rec last year through the state's guidelines, as well as working with local organizations and authorities, and with the BOS in approval. And we were facing summer again this year, a lot of uncertainty, and not sure where the guidelines are going to go. So we actually spoke with, I actually spoke with MRPA too, in one of our meetings, talked about this a little bit, but we decided to put together, along with my Board, a cohort coordinator position that would also be a counselor supervisor position. And basically, because we are going to continue with cohorts, we are still having our, you know, higher level sanitation and cleaning. We're still having the screening questionnaires. We still have for staff and for kids, we still have individual iteming. So, with the exception of the masks coming off, we are still, our guidelines from both the state and federal, all run to recommendations of continued vigilance for, as I said, sanitation, social distancing, and individuals. So, we put this position together basically to oversee those. We're expecting two cohorts, and it's a huge job. I worked way, way beyond, as well as two of my other staff members last summer, trying to get all these things done, the checklist, the tasks, ordering of supplies, the organization, the screening. It's just a monumental task when you're considering, you know, dozens plus of families all involved in this. So this position, we'd like it to be paid through COVID funding, because it is specific for this. This is what we're hiring it for and what we're looking for. Their oversight job as the counselor supervisor will be in handling all of the COVID-specific requirements, as well as being a supervisor for the Summer Recreation Department. So, I put together, I did some comparisons of what we were looking at for supervisor rates across the state and had some conversations, and we're looking at $17.25 an hour at a 40-hour week for six weeks, times two staff members. That comes to $8,280. I did put an additional $360 on there, which gives me an additional 20 hours, which will create my time for prep and for wind-up, for all of the COVID supplies, again, and in the administration that's involved in it. This is not to say that myself and my Assistant Director are not hands in the pie with this. This is to say that we need somebody on the ground the entire time that isn't also trying to focus on doing the arts and crafts and making sure that everybody's safe doing sports, nobody's getting a black eye from a dodgeball, and you know, like, all of the other things that are involved in putting together and planning and caring for our communities' families during the summer program. So, that is our ask. Do we have any questions?
I do. When, what, what is the time period of the program? When does it start? When does it end? And when do you hope to hire?
So, we actually have two, these have already run, the postings have already run, the interviews have already gone into play. We actually have two, two former staff that would be shifting positions for this cohort coordinator position. And they're actually on your later appointments. And it starts July 6th, and it goes to August 13th. And like I said, we do typically, we do load in at the Thursday prior, so that's what we're looking at doing this year, so that would be July 1st. So, all of, you know, when you come into the rec center and you see all of those tubs, or you look in the windows and there's piles of hula hoops, yep, that's all going to get moved. So, so that's, that's all going to happen. So that's, those are the dates, and the program runs from 8:00 AM till 4:00 PM.
Okay, one other question. Did you get confirmation prior to, a week or two ago, that COVID funding would be available for this?
Yes, I was told that COVID funding would be available.
Do you have anything in writing?
No, just to send it off and post it. That wasn't in writing.
Okay, okay, thank you. Questions, Chaz or Joe?
I just wanted Bonnie and Emmy, I both want to, I want to thank you both for everything that you're doing. I reviewed this. The research just involved in this whole thing is, you've done a great job with it. I don't have any issues. We have the, the two individuals waiting in the wings for this, so that would be able to be fulfilled very, rather quickly, right?
Yep, yes, it would.
That's all I got.
I, I have been to say other than, as long as we can get that through the COVID month. God bless you. Thanks for doing a great job, and let's move forward.
Thanks, Joe.
So Emmy, I have, I have another question. Sorry to have all these questions, but is this, you have additional staff beyond these two COVID-related funds? That is your general staffing, correct?
Yes, and that comes through program funding as traditionally applies. Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. It helps with the funding. Okay.
So, Madam Chair, we would be looking for a motion to approve these two positions. Is that what we're looking at?
Correct. Motion to approve the two positions contingent on verification of COVID funding. And we will take care of that.
Do, if I can just put in this here, I do have in the appointments, I have wording such that if that is not the case, they will, those, those staff members will be in a lesser position, but it would, again, all COVID things would revert.
Yeah, I think you need them, and you need them as COVID position. I do agree with you. I just need to ensure that, and we do have COVID funds available, that I just have, we would just have to check and make sure.
Absolutely.
All right, so is there a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we accept the Recreation Department's COVID-19 cohort coordinator position and then counselor supervisor position for seasonal summer programs contingent on COVID-19 funding.
Second.
Any further discussion, Joe or Chaz? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shang, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So thank you for coming in.
Emmy, I'll, I'll let you guys know once we find out about the funding, I'll bring it to you, you guys' attention. And again, thank you both for your, your work here in town.
It's our pleasure.
And I, I'm just going to reiterate that in the absence of a Town Administrator for the moment, the way we're handling things with boards, et cetera, is with liaisons for those boards. So just, so if anyone were to question Chaz coming forward, he, he would be the logical person, as he is your liaison.
I do have, it looks like some of the staff that you guys are appointing are here. So I did want to let you guys know that if you had any questions on that end. Doesn't look like all of them, but it looks like quite a few of them are here. I was notified, a couple have placement tests tonight, but just as a heads up.
Didn't have any issues with that.
Just one second. I'm looking. This is 3.1, correct? All I see is the drop description, unless it's down at the bottom.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, sorry.
Rec Commission, that's a volunteer form.
These are the, these are for the Recreation Commissioners. I can't, I sent you an email, I can't open them. Can you open them on your, wow, you're not set up. These are the Commissioners. Excuse us, Emmy, we're looking for the appointments.
Oh, do you need, do you need a copy of it? Because I'm in my office, I can run it to you. I have it.
Why don't you do that, and we can, down to, we'll move on with the agenda, and yeah, if you don't mind bringing that over. Because I, I don't see them in here. Thank you. All right, moving on to the appointments to Boards that we have on this agenda.
No, I can't get into it either.
Emmy's bringing them. All right, we're moving on to 3.2. We will come back to complete 3.1 later in the meeting. 3.2, is there a motion to appoint Cheryl Simino to a one-year term on the Council on Aging?
I move that we appoint Cheryl Simino to a one-year term on the Council of Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shang, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Next appointments. Is there a motion for the Energy Committee appointments to appoint Brent Carney and Michael Brown?
I move that we appoint Brent Carney and Michael Brown to the Energy Committee, both for three-year terms, expiring June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. MRPC appointments is the next thing. We have, with MRPC, both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen appoint representatives to the Montezot Regional Planning Commission. They meet once a month, usually on Thursdays. They've been Zoom recently, I imagine, with the Governor's orders. It will go back to in-person meetings. 3.4. We also appoint the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, each appoint a member to the MJTC, which is 3.5. That's the Montezot Joint Transportation Commission. So that handles all things having to do with transportation, buses, roads, bridges, anything like that, pedestrian, traffic, bikeways. So those are the two commissions that we need to appoint to. So the first one. Um, so the first one is for, um, a member of the board of selectmen to be appointed. Um, I have been the representative to the board of selectmen to both of these commissions for the past year. Um, but if one of you is interested, um, you're welcome to it. It's the first Thursday for MRPC and the second Wednesday, I believe it is, for, um, MJTC. It's tomorrow, is tomorrow the second Wednesday of the month, MJTC?
Yes.
You've been doing such a great job, Madam Chair.
And I was gonna say that I, I am very interested because there's a lot of information that you can get from, uh, what's available as far as granting and all of that. I unfortunately work late on Thursdays, so I would not be able to meet, uh, with them.
So I, I, I will say that I am the MRPC liaison, but I'm not exactly sure what that means, but I am that, so. Um, I, I'm willing to, I've been doing MRPC for the past maybe six or eight months. And MJTC, I've been doing that since I was on the planning board. So I'm, I'm, if, if neither of you is interested, I, I could go ahead and continue with this for the time being.
Yeah, I make a motion, Veronica, do the MRPC appointment and the MJTC appointment.
Second thought.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Might come back to you.
So, uh, you know, next year we're gonna discuss others, but for now, just keeping the status quo is probably the most sensible thing. So thank you. Um, all right, 3.6, appoint Nancy French to the Towns and Cultural Council. Is there a motion?
Uh, I move that we appoint Nancy French to the Townsend Cultural Council for a two-year term. I would assume this starts on July 1st.
Uh, let me see if I can pull this up, 3.6. We, in May, we asked for all boards to look at their, um, so this was May 4th, so let's just say today, yeah. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, uh, planning board. Associate member, um, appoint Julie Byers for a term from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Uh, I move that we appoint Julie Byers, associate member to planning board with a term from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, I'm wondering if Lance is, if he wanted to say something?
Is anyone from the planning board on?
Um, yes, Lance is here and I really appreciate the board of selectmen nominating Julie for a term starting July 1st.
All right, thank you. Can I ask a question, Lance? Um, does that give you a full board with an associate at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yeah.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Congratulations, Julie. All right, so, um, I'm gonna bring this next one up. Uh, we have appointments to CBA next on the agenda. And we have several appointments there.
I'm gonna do this in two parts.
All right. I am good with that. And again, I'm not exactly sure what this is about. I can't open this. But we have it here, so go ahead.
Um, I move that we appoint Bill Catigan to a five-year term on the zoning board of appeals, ending June 30th, 2026.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Greg Stevens and David Fignoli to a one-year term as alternate members of the zoning board of appeals, ending June 30th, 2022.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Uh, Veronica, this is Lance. Um, I just have a quick comment.
Um, on the appointment to CBA?
Uh, no, in correction to what I had responded to you.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so when you asked if we had a full board, um, we, we will have a full, we have four of the five positions for a full member and Julie is just an associate.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, I wanna thank everybody who has been appointed and thank you for, for volunteering, because we definitely need the help.
The more volunteers we can get, the better. All right, um, moving on to meeting business, section four. Um, this was put on the agenda to, uh, as the result of a comment that came in. It's to discuss the official posting place for town notices. I was wondering if Kathy Spofford was on? So, um,
I'm right here.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Um, I believe that what we have right now is it's, um, all notices are placed for meetings, et cetera, are put on the back bulletin board and also on the website calendar. And if I'm not mistaken, um, the good thing about that is if the systems go down, we still have the meeting posted and we can still hold a meeting, even if our website is down because we've lost electricity or something has happened to the system. So it, it, I, I'll let you talk from now. That's how I understood our posting, so.
So the official posting board is the board outside of the downstairs entrance to town hall, which is really the main entrance. Um, for a short period of time, we did, um, post on the website. However, the website went down. It wasn't on our end, it was on, um, Civic Plus End. And it went down for about three days, if I remember right. So a week's worth of meetings had to be canceled and that's why it was switched back to the bulletin board outside of town hall. Uh, with the best practice being that it's also posted on the calendar on the website, which we have been doing, along with the Zoom meetings during this past year.
So is that?
The, the link for the Zoom.
Right, and that, that's been working for you guys?
Yes.
So I, I, I was, I remember the discussion when it went down and, and what they decided on. I think we should keep it exactly the way it is right now.
Um, Joe, any comments?
Oh, I think, I, I think it's been good. I've stopped, I read the board, I think it's good. Kathy and everybody putting everything out there has done a good job, so just keep moving forward.
I, I would agree. So unless there's any further discussion on this? All right. So, um, we will continue to have the back bulletin board here at town hall as our official posting place with best practice being that is also put on the calendar on the website. And I, I certainly hope that, um, the town calendar is easier to find and to use now with the redesign of our website page. So I know.
Actually, I think it is.
Yeah, just right there. You don't need that extra click, so, um, yeah, so we will keep things as is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, thanks for everything you do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
So the next one. All right, moving on to 4.2, um, discussion of the removal of the executive order, uh, for, um, COVID and the vote on the town implementation of the same. So let me see if I can get to our guidance on that from town council. And this is section 4.2. Keep going out. All right, uh, Joe, just because you're not here, um, at town hall, if you go on SharePoint, it's the, uh, guidance that we received from council on, um, uh, yeah, it's on SharePoint and it's under section, um, for today's meeting, under section 4.2. And Adam sent this to us, um, I think we got it Monday. Um, so, uh, or towards the end of last week, the 4.2, and it's the, the last, it says MTC dash.
I got it, thank you.
Um, this is the guidance from town council based on the governor's order. And as things, uh, which was, um, put in place on, um, May 17th, Governor Baker announced the COVID state of emergency will lift on June 15th. And with that, um, we are going back to open meetings. So, uh, beginning, unless there has been, uh, legislature, less legislation filed to, um, have this extend and have this extend until September, the ability to have Zoom meetings. This, but the way the open meeting law is written, um, right now, if things do not change by, uh, June 14th, which is Monday, um, we will be going back to open meetings beginning June 15th. So the June 15th selectman meeting next week, Tuesday, will be posted as an open meeting. Um, we, it will be, um, on TV, but we will not be doing Zoom at this point. So, um, a quorum of the boards need to be present at the open meetings. And with the open meeting law, if there is someone who is not present, um, they can phone in. Per the old open meeting law, um, uh, rules. So, um, I, I guess.
For you, Madam Chair. So back on Tuesday, that fine, are we going to go in-house on the Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays meetings? Stop it, Sophie. Sophie, stop.
Um, if you're not participating in the meeting, could you please mute yourself?
Sure.
Um, thank you. All right, um, so, uh, yes, um, we would have to go back in-house for the new meetings. So I know that people work. Uh, we would need to have a quorum present here in town hall to have that happen. And, uh, you know, we could have one person call in.
I, I can be available on Monday and Wednesdays, but Fridays I will have to call in.
Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll adjust our meetings accordingly. Based on how, how we can get it. And, um, we have later on in our agenda, in section five, a discussion of an interim. So we will, uh, with luck, we'll have an interim in and our Monday, Wednesday, Friday meetings are just so that we can continue to conduct the, um, business of the town. So once in the interim, TAs, and we will not need, we'll be back to our regular meetings.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam.
Second question on this.
Um, please mute yourself if you are not actively participating in the meeting. Did someone have a question?
Yes, Ronnie, this is Lance.
Okay.
Is, is this effective starting on June the 4th, uh, 15th?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Lance, I have a question for you and for any other, um, board member that is here. Uh, did you receive this guidance from, um, did you also, were you included on the meeting, um, on the notice mailing from Adam?
I was not. I do not recall getting it. I believe Beth received it.
Beth did receive it?
Um, I'll, Beth is here, I'll let Beth address.
Uh, no, I did not. Thank you.
Okay, all right, then, then we will see that it gets out to, um, all the, uh, department heads and board chairs.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll do that right after the meeting. Sorry, writing a note. All right, so, um, the, you know, just keep in mind that it could change on Monday and be different. But, um, we will be posting June 15th for an open meeting until we hear otherwise. So, and I will get this to all of you. So is there anything further on that?
That will be at 6:00 PM, correct?
And, uh, that, June 15th at 6:00 PM, yes, here in town hall. And we'll have to determine whether we're going to use the great hall or the, um, selectmen's chambers. I don't know what we have as far as recording capabilities in the great hall, but we'll find that out before we post later in the week. Okay. Um, moving on to section, uh, 4.3. Again, uh, could 978-425, whatever the rest of that number is, 9848, please mute? How do I do that? Pardon me? Can you tell me how to do that? I'd be glad to.
Are you on a phone or are you on an iPad or what do you want?
Well, I'm on a phone.
On a phone, just, you should be able to hit mute on your telephone.
On your keypad.
Your keypad.
Or if you touch the screen, the mute button should come up.
Thank you. All right, Japanese knotweed. Um, and I, I saw that, um, Joan Walkowitz was on and others from, um, the rail trail.
I'm on too. They'll ride out.
They'll ride out. Okay, thank you. Um, let me go down here. This is 4.3. I'm trying to get my documents up here. All right, on this, I, I just wanna, um, before we go into the, talking about the existence of Japanese knotweed in the rail trail area, in doing the shared streets and spaces, we were, we, the committee, were looking for the places to place the, um, you are here song that we have. And, um, uh, one of the places that we're placing them is on the Jeff Street parking lot. And the ideal location is right where a huge patch of Japanese knotweed is located, and that is on town property. Um, at the same time that we discovered this, the, um, rail trail, uh, committee, um, approached us, the board of selectmen, to say that, um, they had found Japanese knotweed in the next section, um, that would need to be eradicated. So that's the, um, pretext, I guess, or the background for this discussion and why it is here.
Well, there was, uh, another patch that was found over by the library as well.
All right, so a patch by the library, now that we have Japanese knotweed on our radar, it, it would be good if we found everywhere that it does need, um, removed. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just wanna clarify something here. I'm just, I'm reading the, uh, email that was sent out by everybody. I just wanna make it very clear that it has 98 Main Street, which is Harbor Autobody. There is no knotweed on Harbor Autobody's property. It abuts the property, but I just wanna make that very clear that there is nothing on Harbor Autobody's business. So I just don't want anyone to say, what are we doing at Harbor Autobody?
All right, it is on the rail trail property. So, um, Bill or Joan, do either of you, would either of you like to discuss this?
Joan, do you want me to do it or would you like to?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
All right, so the, one of the, you know, it's an invasive plant, but we also have a problem with it because it has the ability to grow right up through stone dust. And we don't. And we don't have stone dust there now, but we will by next spring. So we don't want the plant destroying our rail trail, besides the fact that it's annoying and spread. So we've talked to the people in Groton who have a a volunteer in Groton, whose name is Olin Lathrup. And he is a licensed pesticide applicator. And he does volunteer work for the Groton Trails Committee. And basically, they pay him only for his raw materials. And he has taken care of the Japanese knotweed along the Groton Trails. And so he said he would be willing to have the same deal with Squanah Cook Greenways, remove the knotweed for the cost. But what the town of Groton has done for them, he is required to have insurance whenever he works as outside of his property with pesticides. And since he's not being paid for it professionally, his insurance doesn't cover it. So with this kind of volunteer work, it is required that he have some sort of insurance coverage. So we were wondering if the Selectman would be so kind as to put Olin Lathrup on the town's insurance for the times when he is working in towns and doing work, you know, at raw material cost. So that's a question he asked us. And so that's why we are approaching you.
All right, is there anything else to add to this? Joan or I'm I'm sorry, not Jen, Joe or Chaz?
Well, I I just, I guess I just, my only concern would be exactly what are we putting him on the insurance policy for?
So if you would like, I would, I could get exactly the doc, the way the Groton, Town of Groton has added him to the insurance.
I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
All right, so I could, I could give you the exact wording. I don't have it in front of me, but I can send it to you. The exact wording of what exactly the Town of Groton did to put Olin on their insurance for when he doing volunteer work for them. So you would have precise wording to add to the insurance.
That would be helpful. I know that we had a discussion with Town Council about this at Town Meeting. I think this is where this came up. He had mentioned the discussion I had with him. Something about we might need to look at, or maybe it was Jim, we may need to look at how that works. So looking at how he's added to Groton's would be helpful, I believe.
I I will, should I just email it to the three of you or just you Veronica? Who would you like?
Send it to selectman@townsonma.gov.
Okay, I will do that.
Bill, I think that, because I had a discussion with Town Council briefly about this as well, we just need to know logistically what, how to put it on there because he's not technically an employee. So we have to find out exactly how we add him to that particular insurance policy.
Okay.
But if you could find out from Groton, I think that would, that would make, make things a little easier for all of us.
Yeah, I think that's the most straightforward approach.
I would think that if he's on on Groton, that I'm sure they made him jump hoops in Groton to be there. So if we can get that and review it, I'm sure we should be able to accommodate that same thing.
And Bill, when he does work in Groton, does he do it for the Town of Groton as well as the rail trail there?
He has not done it for the rail trail. He has done it for the Conservation Commission or the Trails Committee, both of which are official town bodies.
Okay, all right.
So I'm sure that in that capacity, they that they somehow have it so that he's part of those those committees on a part time basis so that they can add it on there. So we just need to see how they put put him on there so that we can do the same.
I I think that's a good point.
One more quick question, Bill. So if he does do it, we put him on the insurance, whatever cost or billing that's going to be done is getting through the rail trail people, correct?
Correct. Any any area that he's doing for us along the rail trail, he will be billing us for the raw materials, not the town.
Just want to make it clear for everybody.
Now, he may be willing to do, you know, the other areas of Jeff Street Parking Lot for you for the same deal. I can't guarantee that, but.
We'll have to talk to him. It looks like he might be on a committee in Groton. And that's how he can be added. But send us what you have for the for Groton and we will take it forward with our Town Council and see what we need to do to eradicate, have him help us with eradicating knotweed in Townsend. So do we need a motion for that?
To?
To bring it forward to Town Council for review?
I make a motion that we bring the Japanese knotweed extermination to the town, to the Town Council for advice on how to to go forward with that.
Second.
There is second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Thank you, Bill and Joan, for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
All right, at at this point, what I think I'd like to do, I see that Emmy and the Recreation Commissioner are still on, and I zip right through section four without going back. So do we have the appointments?
It looks like you may have emailed it to me also, so I do have a copy of it.
Excellent. All right. Our appointments for Townsend Recreation Councilors for Summer Rec 2021. Is there a motion?
I move that we
Let's do it.
Agree to agree to hire Shade Dakota, Ray Lee Gendron, Abigail Haas, Wyatt Galant as a counselor for Summer Rec 2021 at the pay rate of 1350 an hour in accordance with Massachusetts Minimum Wage and the Recreation Commission Pay Guideline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we agree to rehire Madison Rowley as a lead counselor for Summer Rec 2021 at a pay rate of 1450 an hour in accordance with the Recreation Commission Pay Guideline.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we rehire Abigail Johnson, Emily Goode as cohort coordinator, counselor supervisor. If vote for funding is passed by the Board of Selectmen at a pay rate of 1725 an hour, if not passed, as a junior ops assistant at a pay rate of 1625 an hour in accordance with the Recreation Commission Pay Guideline.
Is there a second?
Second.
These are the
This is the what we
The two that we just discussed. So we just have to ensure that we do have COVID funding for it.
All right. Go to the junior ops assistant, right?
That's why I put it in that way.
Okay.
Have to do it again.
Okay, all those, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Congratulations, Summer Rec. Hopefully you're fully staffed and you'll be ready to go.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, congratulations. If you need anything else, Emmy, let me know.
Absolutely, you'll get an email.
Thank you. All right, moving back to 4.4, a discussion of the CR on properties that TESA leases from the town. Is there anyone here from TESA?
I am. This is Gary Olmstead. I'm the TC VP.
Excellent. So we received a, let me get to my my documents on this. We received a mail request on this from Matt.
Matt Green.
Green, yeah. That it was forwarded to us about the TESA lease of Squanah Cook Meadows. You had some questions?
Yes. So can I get a little bit of, there's a few things that are going on with TESA. So Matt was our president last year. He stepped down from that role. So I'm currently, I didn't take the president role, I'm the VP, so I I get it by
Default.
By default, that's right. So so basically we have a lease for Squanah Cook Meadows. We've had it now for 15 years. The original lease was a 10 year lease, and then there was a five year addition to that added. That lease ends on June 30. Matt had been trying to work, trying to understand the process for getting that lease re sort of renewed. Because and and in that, we've been also doing some planning around improving the fields. So in parallel with this, we've been working with National Heritage and Endangered Species Program because they're the ones that sort of help talk about the endangered species that we have at Squanah Cook. In in the discussions around our plans, which we intend not as part of necessarily as part of the lease, the lease currently that expires and that we're trying to renew talks about how if we want to improve, we would, we would, we would get those plans approved, you know, additionally. But they also had brought up the topic of getting a conservation restriction. That's not something that the tenant does, that's something that the town does. We kind of, we talked about this as a board and we feel that like our lease has always had, working with the Conservation Commission, has always had working with the NHESP as part of our lease to protect and keep that maintained. So we felt like, we feel like we've done a good job of that with our current lease. And so basically, we're at a point where we just need to know what is the fastest track to getting our, to getting our town, our lease renewed for for the town. We have, we have a full summer program planned. We have fall coming up. We admittedly got a little bit behind because of COVID and trying to figure out and transition of the board. So, you know, basically, in summary, we need, we, we, I and the board doesn't know the next step on taking our lease and getting that that renewed. And that's mainly what we wanted to find out here today, tonight.
All right, I I know that, I think it was Matt, I'm not sure, came forward to the Board of Selectmen. It was probably last August, September timeframe. It was early in my time on the board, I know that. And they had a plan for things that they were thinking of doing to improve. It had something to do with another, an additional building. And there was driveway work, I remember. But we never saw another thing on that. And I I remember Don Klein saying that the lease is up July 1st. So before we approve anything, we would need to look at the lease. So I think the next step from my standpoint is to bring the lease in to the board and we will review it.
Okay.
From there. So seeing as the lease is up at the end of June and you have summer programming, when does your summer programming start?
We, it starts, it it
June 24th, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, June 24th. And actually, we kind of, we we host summer camp, we host summer summer practices and things like that as well. So.
So I I think we should put you on our June 15th meeting to review the lease and see what needs to be done. If you could send that to me so that we can review it and perhaps have council review it. That would be good. And we'll put you on the June 15th meeting.
Which will be, that one will be in person, as I think I just heard.
Yes, it will be, absolutely.
The lease that we send you is, I, we have a lease, our original lease that we've we've kind of marked it up with the with changes and things like that. Is that the, is that the best form to have in is to have the original lease? The with with the changes that are, you know, they're they're highlighted so that you can tell what's different from the new lease from the, from the previous lease, does that?
Having the lease with red line changes would be helpful, I believe.
Okay.
But Chaz and Joe can weigh in too. And then we can look at it. And then we still have a meeting on June 29th, which is before your date of you know, expirations that where we could sign, make any changes and sign. So that would give us a two week period in there.
Okay.
Like that. So if you could do that, that would be helpful.
And I I should send that to Selectmen at Townsend dot ma.us?
Townsend MA, no dot between Townsend and MA, just Townsend MA dot gov.
Gov, okay. All right, I'll send that, I'll send that tonight, actually, so that you have a whole week of review.
And we will add you to the meeting. That meeting is, could be fairly long. So anyway. So Chaz and Joe, do you have anything to add to that? Does that work for you?
I just, I got a question I'd like to ask. For what reasons are you trying to change the lease that you've had? Can you give us a little bit of an idea what we're looking at, why you're thinking to change the lease?
So when we
Gary, do you want me to address that? This is Tricia Foster. So, Joe, we have been working with Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife, the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program over the past several months because for the proposed development on the property, we would need MISA project review, which is Mass Endangered Species Act. And a lot of the red line changes are a result of that consultation with natural heritage to be protective of the wildlife in that area.
All right, that's fine. I just wanted to just have an idea. So when I was reading it, I'd hear it from you guys. Thank you.
So so mainly what you'll see is there's new dates, which are sort of similar to what you, similar along the lines that we had before. But there's a lot of, every red line that you see in there is something about just conserving the environmental sense of nature. This was language that they'd like to have added to it to make, you know, to 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 continue making sure that that's the case. So.
Very good.
Their reason for a CR was?
I I think it's, I think it's just something that they like to try to they, it's it's an extra level of restriction that they try to get on different pieces of land that they, that 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 makes sure that it doesn't have to require being put in the lease and things like that. But it requires, it it requires a direct working between whoever manages the property and 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 them. And and it's so that like, let's say that we get to the end of our lease and someone else were to want to get a lease. Then there's a chance that someone may not put the same, same information into it. But but the thing is, we're just kind of, we, we want to get our lease renewed. We can, we can, you know, sort of look into that after our lease is renewed. But we feel like we've done a, we've, we've got a good relationship with the the turtle people in the town, and we've done a good job of keeping that up. And we have, we have plans that we've been working for there. That you you mentioned the the plans that Matt talked about. One of the things that we can't do at our property now is we can't host summer camps because you need to have a lightning structure. That's, that's a requirement to be able to have a place for kids to get in out of the, out of the lightning if that happened. So those are the, some of the types of improvements that we're looking to do. Those improvements aren't fully spelled in the lease because the lease basically says that if we have plans, we will present those plans as a separate plan. We just, they kind of, it just so happens that we came to the end of the lease at the time that the, at, you know, at this time. So we'll be coming back to talk about those plans as well when we, when we get to it.
So the plans that were brought So the plans that were brought forward haven't been implemented.
Those. That's correct. We, we have, we've been working with, uh, them to get them, uh, approved so that we can apply to, to do them so that we're ready when we, when we can start doing it. Um, but that would be a separate topic, um, for, for a different long meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
After the leases renewed.
That's correct.
All right, so, um, yeah, just send us the red line lease and, uh, um, unless Chaz or Joe, you have anything else? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll put you on a, um, you know, send it to us, we'll respond and let, and give you a time, hopefully, for the meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you very much for the sign.
You're welcome. Thank you. Right, um, four point five road openings for gas repair and new gas lines on Dudley Road, Emery Road and, um, Main Street. So let me get those up.
Dudley Road.
Yep, so I, I think we need a motion for each of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see if I can.
I can't see that, that's really too small.
Okay, so let me see if I can get it bigger. Um.
Two forty-one.
Let me see here. Where did you see it? No. None. We're looking for a street number on this.
Oh, well, I got a.
I got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Or on Dudley Road is two forty-one.
All right, let's do these, um, one at a time.
All right.
So, um, is there a motion?
I move that we approve a road opening for gas repair and new gas lines at two forty-one Dudley Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, moving on to Emery Road.
Number six.
I move that we approve a road opening for gas repair and new gas lines at six Emery Road.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. And the last one, Main Street.
Two seventy.
Oh, oh, that's. Next to me.
I move that we approve a road opening for gas repair and new gas lines at two seventy Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you. Um. Let me, let me just look here. I just motioned.
No, it just, we need just need approval. We'll let them know. And then.
Okay, so, um, four point six Greg's Run, which is going to be happening this year. We, uh, I see the Chip Man is on.
Yes.
So, um, Chip, would, would you like to talk or do you want me to?
Well, as you know, this, this is our seventeenth year, so, um, it's not something new.
Right.
We always put in the request, um, to hold the race. Um, and the biggest part is, uh, that, that for the town to approve, I believe, is, uh, approving closing Brookline Street, um, just along the common. So we usually do that, um, first thing in the morning because that's all the activity, people walking between, uh, the common and the congregational church, which is kind of the host facility, but also then the race starts and finishes there. So we need approval to close, uh, Brookline Street just along that one stretch.
From Main Street to Highland?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, so this is, um, on Saturday, October ninth. So.
Yes.
And it looks like the, um.
When is it? I'm sorry, October?
October ninth, Saturday, October ninth. Let me bring up the other email. And it looks like the, you've also talked to Highway and they're willing to, um, put out the whatever traffic control they need to for the police.
Yes.
Or whatever.
Yes, and I reserve, I reserve the common with Roger Reposa. Um, so that's coordinated. So there's no conflict with anything else. And we haven't discussed police details yet. They've been notified, but they don't like to, uh, get too far ahead. They always ask us to wait until about the first of September to do that. And I will, I will definitely retouch base, um, with the Fire and EMS Department for their support. They always support us every year.
All right. So, um, i- is there a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we close Brookline Street from Main Street to Highland Street on Saturday, ten nine twenty-two-one for Greg's Run.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing then, hearing none. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So all set for October ninth, I hope.
Yes. Be good.
Good luck, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so let's go to, uh, road opening for Todd Drive. This is for, here we go again, in the dark. Um, this is for a water service, Town Water, um, to be put on at twenty-three Todd Drive.
I move that we approve a road opening for connection to Town Water on twenty-three Todd Drive.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So thank you very much. Um, moving on to, uh, section five, the work session with town administration updates and reports. Um, the first thing I wanted to report on, uh, was from of the meeting that we had with, um, DOR on Monday morning. This was the town financial team. Let me pull up some stuff. Uh, so the, um, the main purpose of the meeting was to, uh, provide Townsend with guidance on finances in the absence of an accountant and until an interim town administrator is in place. Um, so we did get, and we'll talk more about this in the next, um, section, the interim TA, uh, discussion, but we did get, uh, you know, a lot of things cleared up as far as how to go forward. So, um, uh, we need to do a municipal relief transfer, so all departments are looking at their budgets for what they have left to spend and what they expect to spend for the rest of the year. And that was one of the things that they brought us, uh, they brought, um, forward. So as far as reconciling and encumbrances come, we're all set there. Um, the fiscal year twenty-two budget that will be sent out by, um, the town clerk. Uh, we looked at COVID funds and we discussed the CARES Act funds that are the ones that the state has dispersed. Those, um, will be, and let me see if I brought this up, uh, the reconciliation for those was supposed to be, um, June thirtieth, but it's been moved out to October twenty-ninth, which gives us also more time to expend funds. So we can look at what is left in the town. I don't have the exact numbers of what we have left, but I know that there is some money available there for COVID-related activities. Things like cleaning and town buildings that is still ongoing. Um, things like, uh, helping our employees to be able to work remotely. We, even though the emergency has been lifted, we don't know what could happen in the future with a variant. Or, you know, there could be another spike and if there is, um, we would like our employees to be able to easily work from home. So we'll be looking at what we can do to, with COVID funding to help, um, that happen. So that was a, um, a good thing to find out. That, um, uh, next was, uh, finalizing, um, the contracts for the employees. We discussed that and we do have executive sessions later on today for the Board of Selectmen to discuss that. Um, for monthly reconciliation of accounts, uh, we need, um, to have an interim in place, either accountant or, uh, TA with the ability to, um, to, uh, approve, um, funding. So, that's pretty much it. Uh, Friday is the procurement for the, uh, Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. The bids will be open or expected to be open on June eleventh at noon. And, uh, the one other thing that they pointed us to were the, um, ARPA funds that are coming from the federal government. This is the new round of COVID funding from the federal government for towns in Massachusetts. And there is guidance on the MMA website on that. Um, Townsend, and I, I went to look at that just yesterday. So Townsend, um, is, uh, there, again, there are restrictions on how these funds can be used. This is the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. And, um, Townsend, it was based on your size, uh, your population, pretty much. And so we are, our municipal allocation is nine hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, nine hundred seventy-nine. Let me say that again, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars is our municipal allocation and that comes to us over the next two years, if I remember this correctly, in two separate, um, pieces. So, uh, you know, kind of a fifty percent, then a fifty percent. There are specific things that this can be used for. Infrastructure is one. Um, the difference, and there's a formula for this, so not to get too excited, I guess, but there is a formula for the amount that you can, um, charge, so to speak, against these funds for the difference in, say, taxes from, um, entertainment or restaurant or, uh, property that you expected to get or what you normally would have gotten versus what you did get because of COVID. You know, um, business has been closed and the like. There is also specific infrastructure uses, um, water, sewer and things of, uh, stormwater, uh, climate change aspect to it. Um, and while we're on that, and this is something that could maybe come up later somewhere in the stack, there is a letter from Pepperell. The Board of Selectmen have invited us to a regional talk, um, regarding, um, climate on May twenty-fourth. The Pepperell Select Board invites you to join in a virtual meeting on June twenty-fourth at seven PM to discuss organizing a regional climate change effort and, um, network in an effort to facilitate our municipal actions to meet the Commonwealth's goal of achieving a zero-carbon footprint by twenty-fifty. So, um, that's something that the Select Board will be considering. So there are different uses. If you want more information, you can go on the MMA website. It is the lead article. Whether you are a member or not, you can read it. So, or at least last night, it was the lead article on that website.
Is that just for the Select Board or can other people go to that meeting or?
Oh, the June twenty-fourth meeting? I don't know. I just saw.
Because that would fit into, um, our MVP um, as, uh, um, outreach to other communities. Um, I, if you don't, if the board's okay with it, I would like to talk with, uh, Beth in regards to if that would be something that would, they would be able to, um, be part of that grant.
Yeah, that would make sense, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Um, I, I am. It's not clear on this.
Good. I can look into it if you'd like.
Uh, sure.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Question for you. I know we were just talking, you were talking about, um, working on trying to figure out what we need to do to get employees remotely. Um, I think you mentioned we may be able, or we do still have COVID funds. Do we have a timeline that, because I do know there are people in Town Hall that really should have a computer so they can work remotely. And I don't think we should have to make anybody jump hoops to do it. So if we know that we are gonna go forward, how soon can we expedite that?
Um, I don't know the exact timeline, but I will find out. Um, I, we have to report back by the end of October. So I assume we have, and, uh, the DOR Bureau Chief said that we were able to expend funds between now and then. So I can find out the exact dates, but I'm sure we have some time, July and August.
Get that way, when for us as a board, can we act on maybe getting laptops so employees can work at home? How soon can we, as a board?
We have.
We can put it as an agenda item on a meeting, but before we do that, we would need to investigate those exact dates. So Joe, would you like to look into the dates for the COVID CARES Act?
COVID. And just gonna check to what date we can spend to or spend from?
And exactly what, um, allowable uses there are.
Well, uh, did we already get laptops for people through the COVID program already?
Yes, we did.
Oh, I guess that's what, um, I, I guess I, I won't beat around the bush. I think there's certain employees that I think really need a laptop to work remotely. And, um, I think if they were already been able to do, if there's money there, I think some of them have reached out and we won't use any names, but I think we should look into that and we should make it as soon as possible. So the particular employees have that capability of working through at home.
I, I agree. There's a process though, um, that you have to go through to apply for the funds and, um, notify the state that you're gonna be using. I know there's a process that you have to go through to use those funds. So what we need to do is find out what that process is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um. So that's, that's about it. Uh, Chaz and Joe, any questions?
No.
Did we, there was another meeting set or were, you know, are we?
No other meetings.
So it was, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm sure if we need another one, we can have one, but, uh, no other meeting was set.
Madam Chair for being there and, and helping us get in the right direction.
You're welcome. Um, oh, the other thing, um, I want to say about the ARPA funds is we do as a town need to apply. So we'll be working with, um, Jared and the finance team because the towns that are being granted these uh, funds, which is all the towns in Massachusetts effectively, but you do have to apply for them. They don't just come to you without an application because it is possible for towns to reject the money. So we need to, um, make sure that that process is being followed to, um, apply for the funds.
All right.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is an interim TA. Um, again, let me find my lists here. Uh, yeah. That's not good. Okay, so we received a list of names from Zach Blake, who is the Bureau Chief. For DOR DLS was in attendance at the meeting. He, it's the Technical Assistance Bureau Chief and he has sent me a list of names. For interim TAs. He has also today, the Collins Center, Mike Ward at the Collins Center. Has sent me another, we weren't able to connect, but I'll talk to him tomorrow for additional names. But what we need to decide on is a process and we talked about this briefly at yesterday's noon time meeting. A process for hiring the interim TA. What I learned at the meeting was. And Adam, our town council was at that meeting. We don't have to set up a search committee as such, but we discussed having people review. So we could go out as a board and. Post for that and I did do an interim TA posting. Did I put it in here?
Yes.
So. We could go out as a board and. Query the people whose names seem reasonable to us after a quick review by the three of us. And narrow it down to a certain number that we are interested in talking to. And then it might make sense to have a broader committee to review along with us. So I guess what we need to decide is what is our process? For the interim. This is not for the, this is not for the, you know, we will eventually be posting for. A full-time TA and the charter. Will guide that, but an interim TA appointment is not guided by the charter.
Adam Chair, can I speak on that? Well, would you get the names? And I think between the three of us, we should narrow it down to maybe three or four or five. And I think to keep it above the boards and transparency to the community. I think we need to, however we come up with, have different individuals from different department heads. Fire, please, Town Clerk's Office, Conservation, whatever, have part of it. And then kind of sit and review it and then make some kind of a decision. I, I just don't want the perception that I was involved in hiring an interim without having some kind of input.
I had taken the liberty to talk to four other communities that were in our situation. And three of those were that they had received suggestions that we have. Their process was that they had sent out a job description in the letter of, of. Interest and their resume and they proceeded with that accordingly. I'm okay with that, but I would like to, I like Joe's idea. If A, we've got to find out if the individuals that were suggested from M D O R. Interested in, in our, you know, filling in in our community, number one. And number two is if they are, I believe that, you know, we could. Reach out to the department heads and have a, you know, however, a question, answer or that kind of. Thing so that everybody has an ability to ask questions or whatever. And then the board can deliberate from there. I think that would be fair.
Okay.
That, that's the process that other communities have gone through.
So I'm going to ask you to do something. Could you write up that process for us so that we could perhaps consider it at tomorrow's meeting?
Veronica, could I say something?
Sure, Kathy.
I was at that meeting, as you know. I thought DOR wants us to get someone in here like ASAP. In fact, I thought they mentioned by the end of the week.
They would like that, but they have also sent, I've been working with SAC. And with Mike Ward. And so there's a process that goes with it. And yeah, they'd like it by the end of next week and I'm, or the end of this week, but I think that even, you know, by the end of next week. Would be wonderful, but I think that the end of June is more likely. Some of the people that they put on the list. I, Google is our friend, as Bobby Joe said, so I Googled every single one of them last night. And somewhere in my stack of paper, I have notes on it. Some of these. Are still, they're retiring at the end of June, some of the names that they gave me. Some of them are currently working. In, in interim positions and this would be a second interim position. Some of them are far away, like Ipswich, Mass, Topsfield. So Monson going in the other direction. So what's realistic? As far as getting them in by the end of the week, that would be wonderful if we could. But we're working with SAC to get it done as quickly as we can. And I just think that the process, I mean, this is tomorrow that we're looking at the process. I do think so that there is no question as far as the, you know, the three of us have picked someone. That it would be good to have other eyes on it. So I would just like Chaz to write down the process while I continue to work with. SAC and Mike to find the reasonable people. That we can approach. So but yes, the goal, absolutely, the goal is to get someone in as quickly as possible.
I just think they have it prolonged too long. That's all.
I agree, because this is a lot of work for a lot of people here. This is just for the interim and there was a comment, I just want to address that there will be a search committee. For the new TA and there will be, you know, will be posted for openings to set. Screening committee, just like was voted on for the, at the town meeting with the change in the charter. So yes, the town will be involved.
All right. So Chaz, you'll write up your quick process. I will continue to look. I'm hoping to have. Three or four candidates that. Zach and Mike are pretty much screening them to see whether, I mean, we don't want to spend a lot of time reaching out to people. Who would not at all consider. A drive of two hours, for example, to Townsend. South Hadley was another place that someone lived. So what's realistic? So they're, they're helping with that and we will just keep you posted. But meanwhile, it would be good if it were not just us who were looking at it. So.
Adam Chair, can I, and I don't know if this is the time I should speak or say this. But I, I think first and foremost, I think everybody here, the entire community. I'm hoping that they realize that, you know, we have made some changes, very tough changes for the community. It's not easy. I feel the three of us are putting our best foot forward. We're all putting a lot of hours in. The kind of exchange that went on this evening, personally, I'm not proud of and I don't really want to see that. I think all our employees, you know, I've said it a million times. If we don't have good employees, we don't have anything. But I don't think that any of, anybody should be trying to put anyone's back against the wall. We need to work as a team. We need to work as a group. And if we get into that kind of bickering like we did this evening, we are going to get nowhere. And I will apologize for the way I spoke, but I just don't like the hostility that is going on. And we need to all be better than that.
I, I think I will add that we all have to step up and. Do what we can to keep the town moving forward. That's all. So thank you, Joe.
So Madam Chair, you had put in a job, not a job description, but a. And are, are we, did you look at that, Joe?
Interim posting that I put together.
Nice, I mean.
There were some blanks in there. Sorry, my, my second computer just went out and it's going to take a minute to. Get it sucked back together here. Yeah, Chaz, if you could read that, that was, I didn't think of it until now. Excuse me. Appointment should be reconsidered of those that are not doing what they were sworn in to do. That we're not doing it.
Laurie, mute yourself.
We, we need to. Forward here. Chaz is going to read the. The. Interim posting, something that, and we could, we can change this. This is the letter of inquiry. I like that idea. So go ahead and read.
So Townsend population ninety five hundred seeks qualified applicants to serve as interim town administrator with an anticipated start date. In June twenty twenty one through appointment of the next town administrator. The interim town administrator will support a three-member board of selectmen and manage day-to-day operations of town departments. Consistent with duties identified by the town charter and the selectmen operating policies and procedures. Interested candidates should send cover letter and resume to Board of Selectmen. Attention interim town administrator. Search two seventy two Main Street, Townsend, Mass. Oh, one four six nine electronic submission preferred to. Selectmen at Townsend MA dot gov. Townsend is an AA slash E O E employer. I, I think, I think we should, if, if. I, I would suggest if I'm going to write a process, then can you write a letter, a formal letter from the board to send out to these individuals with this?
Sure. That might be quicker than a posting.
Right.
I, I pulled that from, that was for Sturbridge, either Sturbridge or Stockbridge. I can't remember which.
That I, I went at their process.
It was their interim posting. So I went on a search for. Interim town administrator postings, which was recommended to me to see what other towns had put out there for what they were looking for. I did not call the towns, so. Anyway.
So what do you think of that, Joe?
Oh, I, I think it's good. I thought it was well worded. I mean, it's, it's basically what we're doing. I mean, it's what we're looking for. You know, and once we get to the, you know. The point of the interviewing, we, we have a committee, but we got to start somewhere by posting. We need to do something.
So what I'll do is I'll take this posting, so to speak, and I'll also put it into the form of a letter from the Board of Selectmen. I do need to figure out where to get letterhead from. So if either of you know that, that would be good. And so. And I'll put that posting in a letter form so that perhaps we can post this as well as send directly to those who are likely candidates. I should have that list hopefully by our meeting tomorrow, but I can't guarantee it. We've been going back and forth phone tag all afternoon, so. Hopefully I'll have a list of maybe four, maybe five possible candidates. Tomorrow that we could send this letter out to, but when, if they are to respond and come back. It would be nice to have a review committee of more than just us and we don't have to meet all at one time. You know, people could just, I don't know, Chaz is doing the process. I'll let him do it. And we'll talk about it more tomorrow, but that's where we are with the interim TA.
Okay, great job.
Any, anything further on that? Okay, moving on, any reports from? Board liaisons. Let me see if I can get this up now. I, I guess my only report is that the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. We have received the funding. That's the one hundred eighty two thousand one for signage and striping of bike lanes. And crosswalks, et cetera, in town. The, and including a solar. You know, pedestrian crossing sign up by Spalding. So not sign, you know, light up by the rapid blinking lights for crossing. So we have received the funding from that, that we did get the grant. We have been granted an extension so that the work does not have to be. Completed until December thirtieth. That's when our report is due to MassDOT. We would like to have it done early in the fall, at least. And we did, we were out for bid. So Emmy Hoff has been our contact for the grant and she and Jim Smith and others in town have been doing a great job. Keeping that going. The bids were due today and the bid opening. Is scheduled for noon on June eleventh. So that's this Friday here at Town Hall. Consequently, we will not be having a Friday meeting for the Board of Selectmen at noon. If we do find that we need a meeting, we would have to do it later in the day. I don't know your schedule, Chaz. But we'll talk about that for next, later on. So anyway, so consequently, this week. There will be no meeting on the fourteenth at noon, but we will have one Monday. At noon. So and that should, since we have three days in a row here, that should cover us, I hope. Anything that comes up in the meantime.
You're talking the eleventh, we ain't having a meeting. You said the fourteenth.
The fourteenth, we will have a meeting, the eleventh we won't. If I said that wrong, I apologize. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so. So that's that. Anything else from board liaisons?
I do not.
Joe, anything?
I, I don't have anything as far as the liaison. I just, on our next one, we can discuss some of the abandoned buildings that I was involved in.
Okay, let's go to that next then. Five point three point one, the report on the abandoned buildings. And there are quite a few files here, Joe.
So what I did is the four of us, the fire chief, the police chief. The grounds, Rob, and the building inspector and myself went out to four major buildings that. Everybody thought was a real concern. One is eight Elm Street. The other one is one eighty two Warren Road. Another one is ninety seven Main Street. Sixty five Main Street and then eight Elm Street. So if you look at the reports, there, there's a report on each one of them from. The fire, the police, the building commissioner and the maintenance rob. And the major thing, there were two major concerns that had to take immediate action on. And one of them is the boarding up of one eighty two Warren Road. The fire chief, the police chief, and you all should see that their recommendation is to get that boarded up as soon as possible. Because of people in and out of there, the thing wide open, the liability. The other one was the, the old library. And they were very concerned with multiple things inside there as you read. The fire load, the hazard, but the biggest concern is the safe that's downstairs on the bottom floor. That it's an operable safe and if anybody, as they've already had breaking entries in that building. If anybody was to ever go in there, kids playing around, lock somebody in that safe, the safe can still lock. And that really brought a lot of concern to everybody.
So Joe, can I just ask, so the safe is empty.
But the door is open. And it will close and if you lock it. From, if somebody was in there and you locked it on the outside, that person is locked inside that vault.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I think I'm hoping that you all have in front of you everything from all of them. And explaining exactly their opinions, what their thoughts were. So with that said, I guess I'm going to leave it up to the board to decide how they want to move forward on those. So, with that said, I guess I'm gonna leave it up to the board to decide how they wanna move forward on those.
All right, I have not read every single one of these reports. Um, there are quite a few here.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that we should focus on the, um, the two that you mentioned. Um, and I, I think at this point, I would want to, um, move the discussion to six point four, the executive session. Can we do that?
Uh. I, I.
Do you want an open meeting vote to purchase plywood? Is that it?
Well, I, I mean, I think if you read, there was, I, I think the building department went out and got a couple quotes on, you know, to board up the one building. Uh, and that would be, I do believe that quote is attached in here somewhere.
I know that when we received it, I put it in here, but I don't see it now.
Yeah, I could see you had it in there. So. I, I guess, my opinion, I mean, I, 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 I think as a board, we have to just look at, I don't think we need to go on executive session about this. This is no secret. I mean, the building inspector, originally, when that came up, the town administrator told, um, Eric and myself, if Eric felt it was an emergency as the building commissioner, just to have it boarded up and then worry about, he would worry about getting the funds later. I don't think that's a good way to look at it, but that's what we were told. So Eric did get a couple quotes, so it's up to the board to decide who they want to award a bid to. Um, and as far as the safe in the, um, library, I just think we direct the, uh, maintenance department, Rob, to just have somebody come in and weld it shut or do whatever, but I, I think them are the only two things that we really should be very concerned on and just act on, in my opinion.
So the safety issues are one eighty-two Warren Road and the Hart Library with the safe.
Yeah, there, there's other issues, but they're not, that, there's something that we can discuss. They've been in disarray for, for years, but at another meeting that we don't have an overload on, I think we should go down each one of those buildings. Because if you have time, and, uh, I apologize, I wanted to get them to everybody a little bit earlier than last week, but I just had to wait for everybody to send me so I could send you a complete packet. Uh, I think we can discuss those other ones, but I think Veronica, or I do think you did have the, um, the bids.
I do.
I, and, and I think, you know, I, I did reach out. I heard that there was some plywood in the, uh, municipal garage and it belonged to Teamer and I, I was involved with speaking with Shirley Coit, very nice, but unfortunately, they have plans for that or they would have loved to have helped us. And that was all purchased through a grant. Uh, but, so I think we just make a decision if we're gonna move forward, have Eric notify whoever we decide, get that building boarded up. I direct the, um, the, uh, maintenance, uh, Rob to get that safe locked down, and then we can have plenty of time, deal with this all summer and deal with the rest of them buildings.
Okay.
Um, I, I agree with you in regards to one eighty-two Warren Road in the Hart Library to get those two things fixed immediately. I feel that we have a town properties committee that really needs to be part of the discussion for all the properties. Um, because that committee is, is one that, um, that has a lot of knowledge on, on what's going on with those individual properties, so I agree. Um, but the safety issue, like we talked about before, I think is first and foremost. Um, so I, I feel that, um, we should go for the low bid, um, for one eighty-two Warren Road to get that sealed up as quickly as possible. And I also agree that we should ask, um, the facilities to do something that they can, uh, over at the Hart Library to get that situation rectified ASAP.
So, is that a motion?
I will make it a motion.
I will say.
Second.
I will.
Any, any further discussion? All right, then, um, all those in favor of seeing, accepting the low bid to board up Warren Road and, um, uh, seeing what the facilities can do with the safe, um, in the Hart Library? So all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Yes, Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
How much is the low bid?
Seventeen hundred dollars, if I remember correctly. The higher bid was about thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred.
I can't make, I can't make any promises. However, there is a little bit money left in the reserve fund to fund the purchase, if you apply to the finance committee.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Give us Andrea.
Okay, apply to finance committee. All right, um. Andrea, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How, how does one typically do that? Just write a letter to you?
There's a form.
There's a form.
And Carolyn can give it to you. It has how much you have in an account. It, it's very simple. You just look at it, fill it out.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right.
Um, so, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so, Joe, I, I will get you who you need to contact or who we need to contact for the properties committee?
Okay, yeah, if you wanna do that, and then I, I will reach out to them and tell them we'll have a discussion on them and we'll, we'll let them know when we're gonna have a meeting and they all can come in and we'll discuss the rest of those buildings.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
The best thing.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I agree. So, um, okay. Uh, anything else from liaisons? All right, I do have, um, one piece of correspondence, so moving down to announcements and communications. Um, this is, uh, regarding the Wall that Heals. Will, that will be, um, in Townsend. Let me see if I can get the exact dates. Make this bigger. Uh, Townsend is, um, one of the towns on the Wall that Heals tour. And, um, this tour begins on April eighth. And it will be going through Townsend. I wanna say it's fourth of July, um, or thereabouts. Is Karen Clement on? The call? I, I guess not. I don't see it in her
You don't see it.
E- email. Uh, volunteers are needed for June.
She's on, yes. She's on, she's just muted. Karen, unmuted.
Can she hear that?
Ronnie, this is John Page.
Hello, John. How are you?
Hi, um. June thirtieth through July fourth is when the, uh, town that, the, the wall that heals will be in Townsend.
Okay, so, um, there are volunteer slots that need to be filled for that time here in Townsend. Um, it sounds like it would be a, a really rewarding way to volunteer. Um, so there is a link. Uh, you don't need to be a veteran to volunteer. All citizens are welcome to volunteer. So, uh, please consider, uh, signing up for a slot. Uh, should I read all of this? The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund has announced the Wall that Heals National Tour Schedule for twenty twenty-one. The Wall that Heals exhibit includes a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial along with a mobile education center. The twenty-sixth season of the Wall that Heals will begin on April eighth in New Bern, North Carolina, and visit the communities listed below. We're one, we are a community from, um, the thirtieth of June to July fourth. The, uh, the traveling exhibit honors more than three million Americans who served in the US Armed Forces in the Vietnam War. And it bears names of the fifty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-one men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam. And we are fortunate to be one of two places in Massachusetts that the wall will be visiting this year. It will be staffed by volunteers and it will be in the North Middlesex Regional High School parking lot in Townsend around the clock while in town. So, a, a lot of volunteers are needed. So, um, I will see if I can't get this up on the website so that the link is there, and I believe this is on various, um, Facebook pages in town. So certainly if you have time over that, those, um, six or so days, uh, consider volunteering. So, that was the only, uh, communication and announcement that I had. So next meetings, um, we have work sessions on July ninth or June, I'm sorry, I said July. I'm getting ahead of myself. On June ninth, our eleventh work session, um, is canceled. Uh, and in place will be, um, hopefully procurement of the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. June fourteenth is Monday. We will not be having a joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners on the fourteenth. However, the Board of Water Commissioners will be meeting for people who are interested in that on the fourteenth. On the fifteenth, we will have a regular Board of Selectmen meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners in attendance. And one of the purposes of that meeting is to, um, do a little bit of public education on the, uh, PFAS, um, on, in the water in town. So, uh, I know that the Water Commissioners will be speaking and helping to educate the public. Um, this will be right now an in-person meeting, not a Zoom meeting. So, uh, depending on the number of people, we may wanna consider the Great Hall. Um, so that's next week, Tuesday. That will be a full Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, we will also have a work session on the sixteenth and the eighteenth tentatively.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can, do we need to schedule a, um, concession plan with TCAM in regards to, uh, meetings going forward that are gonna be taped? Do they have to be in here? Do they have to, you know, are we gonna be using the Great Hall? Is there a contingency plan for that?
Um, talk to TCAM. I know I did have a discussion yesterday because I was in Town Hall during our meeting. Um, and they asked what we were gonna be doing going forward, and it was gonna be live in here. Um, from what I understand, Zoom and, uh, you can't do Zoom at the same time. Although we're doing that now, right?
Yeah.
Um, if they are taping, right now, they're projecting Zoom on the television. If, if they are going to go with filming a live meeting, that's where the conflict is. Filming a live meeting and projecting it on Channel Nine while at the same time doing a Zoom. There are technical difficulties, or maybe I should say technical challenges, um, to that. And Dave, do you wanna talk about that a little more? I see you just unmuted yourself. So, if you could, go ahead, um.
Basically what you said is correct. It would be very, very difficult for us to, uh, have you conduct a Zoom meeting and live at the same time and be able to broadcast. However, I've got some new information from today. I was talking to, uh, Pepperell's, uh, public access folks down there. And they want to meet with Hartley and myself because they think they have a piece of equipment that we could get fairly quickly that would allow us to conduct a hybrid Zoom and live meeting and be able to broadcast it live at the same time. As soon as I can find out more details about that, I will let you folks know.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I mean, for all, for all that COVID has been, um, Zoom meetings have become kinda good. You know, it means that people can stay at home and even if you don't have Comcast, you can get the meeting live. So, I mean, I know they are recorded and put up afterwards, but, um, in any, in any event, there we have it. So we'll let you know more on that. But, uh, so the fifteenth is with the Board of Water Commissioners here and I haven't posted the agenda. I've been kinda waiting until it's actually due just to try to get it in as final a format as I can, but it does need to be posted. Um, I will probably post on Thursday, just so that I don't miss that Friday date. So, um, and if we have to revise, we will. So that's just all there is to it. So thank you. Thanks, Dave. Moving on, is there a motion to sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I move to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Yes.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Yes, Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Um, all right, we have, uh, four executive sessions coming up. I imagine that we will be coming back into open session after the executive sessions are over and, uh, um, just to report back on those that are reportable. I had originally thought that we would do one of them, come back to open session, do the next and come back to open session and do the next and come back to open session. And then six point, point four, not return to open session. Um, so. I don't know. I will take it under advisement from my board. What do you think is best? We could just do all four of them and then return to open session.
Yeah, that'd be quicker and easier.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so, um, do I have a motion for each of those with the fact that we will be returning to open session at the end of six point four?
Madam Chair, I make motion to enter into executive session pursuant, pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Uh, this is ASME clerical supervisors, highway, water, and police. Uh, I also move to go into executive session pursuant, pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public and the chair so declares, uh, in regards to IAFF. I also move to go into executive section pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, re-ASME and the police. And I also move, uh, to go into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A four to discuss deployment of security personnel or equipment or strategies with respect to their two town buildings and files and return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Yes, Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So, um, we are respectfully asking that everybody, um, leave the open meeting.
Who are we gonna allow in, Veronica?
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, those that might want to, uh, we are gonna be locking the meeting, but there will be, um, uh, the possibility that we may, um, want some people to come in to answer questions, perhaps. So I think at this point, um, those persons know who they are and, uh, I'm wondering where my cellphone is. Uh, and I could either call them if we have, uh, question for them and ask them to re-enter, or they could hang out in the waiting room until further.
I guess my only question would be, we're doing several different, um, several different, uh, contracts. So how do we, I don't think everybody should be in every one of them, so we're gonna have to figure out who's coming in on which one of the, uh, the executive sessions, correct? Am I wrong on that, or?
Um. Well, I guess, looking at this six point one, um, uh, we would be looking at, um, the union folks for that one. Six point two. The same. Six point three. The same and including perhaps the chief. Six point four, the chief, it would be nice to have him. Perhaps invited in for all of that session. That's where we have it right now.
All right, awesome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a suggestion only because somebody brought it up earlier in the chat about TCAM recording. Would you like to conduct this the way you did about two or three weeks ago? Where we would keep this link open and active, people can stay in here. But you, the members of the board and whoever you need to invite would start your own separate Zoom meeting. And then when you're done, rejoin the main meeting here. For security purposes, I'd recommend that if you find that feasible.
That sounds reasonable. Dave, if you could guide us through it if we need it.
I can just open up a meeting, Dave.
Correct, that's what I was gonna suggest, just Chaz or Ronnie or Joe. One of you would open up your own Zoom meeting on your own computer. That way it's separate from this link and there's no possibility of. Any anything getting out that shouldn't be out.
Okay, so then, Dave, should we all go away from this?
No, they're gonna keep this open.
Oh, they're gonna keep this open, okay.
Well, yes. Hartley and I will keep this link open, but the board and whoever you're inviting to your executive sessions. Would all have to leave here and then join your own Zoom meeting, then come back to this. That's why we'll leave this open for you.
Okay, so Chaz, you will open the Zoom meeting and invite each of us in.
So you're gonna send us the passcode and?
I'll send it, I'll send it to you, Joe.
And it'll come in our email, correct?
So we're 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 all getting off of this.
Correct.
Leaving meeting.
And then you're gonna keep that open, we'll go back into that, zoom, walk out of the other one and go back into that one.
Yes.
Correct, as long as the link should still be valid for this meeting. So you can come and go as you please, but if we keep it open, you'll be able to do it. If we end it, we would have to reissue the links all over again to everyone, including the general public, so. Well, actually, we can keep it going if you want, Hartley, so the general public that might be watching on Channel nine only. We'll see, we've got that slide that I can share on my screen, so please stand by. Yes, please.
All right, so I'm. We're gonna need the passcode, Chaz, right?
Yeah, wait until you exit this before you do anything with new passcodes.
Okay, all right, see you later, goodbye.
Yes, as long as you're still able to broadcast the please stand by message. Otherwise, let it keep running. Okay.